We're here today to try to put a list of roads together that we want to, want Butler Fairman, correct me if I'm wrong, to go through, estimate the cost, so that we can place those roads in priority on the application for community crossings.
Great.
I don't think there's any questions that we, we don't want to complete our Columbia Road project and add 650 to the highway.
You don't want to raise that?
No, I said, I don't think there's any question-
Oh, okay, I was gonna say.
-that we want to finish that. So, that definitely want, would want to go on our list.
Yeah.
And if you look at the map behind you-
Two point one miles.
The, the aqua color is the, is what-
Actually, it's a mile and a half, if you go by the map.
Say that again.
The aqua color is, is what we're looking at. This section, do you want this section on or off?
Do you mean the dead end?
Yes.
Why was it ever put on there?
It, I just clicked on it, that's what I'm saying, I don't know if you wanted it on or off, okay.
No, no, I don't think we want the dead end.
I'll stay with it.
The high-
Stick with the primary.
If we're gonna do a day, if we're gonna do it, we'll do it.
The highway garage can do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
If, but I, that's fairly good shape, isn't it?
It's not, I haven't been down, I need to check it.
I mean, it probably needs checking.
They could- They could, huh? You would ask me that. You know how long since I've been down it, really?
Six, eight.
I think there's four.
Four. Yeah, I think there is four. Well, they tore one back down, clear back there in the back, on the right side.
Yeah. The original.
And the Bergen, that big house right there where the barn's gone, that you, the Bergens used to own it. But there's none. Two houses coming up the road on your left, another house right after you get past them on the right, and that big white, white house back there in the back.
Yeah.
So, number one priority is finish 650 west, 625 west, isn't it, 650?
650 west.
Just about three, just about two miles.
Okay. Now, one question, as far as Columbia Road and all that primary traveled roads, is turning there at, oh, she didn't have the map up.
I did.
I've got paper maps here, Gary. Here. She might buy my bearings.
This is the one we just did, right here.
Is this from here on into Orange to the county line?
It's called Strawberry Hill, yeah.
Yeah, that's 400 south.
Yep.
I've heard people in that area talk about that as a primary road, and it's-
There's a lot of traffic on it.
A lot of traffic on that road.
Yeah.
So, when we look at it, clear to the county line is a, one of our primary priorities. Also, I'm wondering if we need to come down here and start looking at Alpine Road and Johnson School in Allentown to get to the county line. Twenty, twenty years ago, we looked at that as a primary, one of our primary roads. Real south. I don't know how important it is from where we started on Columbia Road, on over to 121.
Those were good shape, we chip sealed one, down, we chip sealed last year.
They were pretty good shape.
Yeah.
Both tens.
I'm sorry?
They're both tens.
Okay, right now, that's the high number, high score. And I don't know, what's this look like from where's one?
Just as a reminder-
That right there is one, yeah.
Here's Everton?
Yeah.
I don't know about this stretch.
I got that on that list, the others, uh, two, two and a half miles out there to, or turn down Bentley.
Yeah.
If you go all the way down to where it makes it right, to Bentley right there, yeah.
Here.
That's two and a half miles.
From here, you're saying from here?
Here to Bentley.
From Everton Road?
Don't you consider it a primary?
Yeah, they're, they're pretty, they're pretty active roads, yeah.
Especially late traffic, probably getting down Egiapolo.
Egiapolo traffic, isn't it, yeah.
Yeah, that fits to dock down there.
So...
You know, you've got a lot of primary roads you can look at.
I mean-
Depends how far north you wanna go.
We could go, I, I wouldn't be opposed to taking Harrisburg Road on out, past Harrisburg, at, at least-
Six miles.
Six point two miles.
At least to Fairview Township.
Okay, that's about that, about three miles.
Because I don't wanna go into Fairview until we get a confirmation weather. Windmills are coming around.
That could be years out, we don't know.
Oh, I think, I think we will know, 'cause their, their contracts with the county are about to run out, I think.
As long as the government ain't gonna give them no money, they ain't gonna do it. That's the only thing, is making them windmills stay away, right?
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't disagree with you, but that's-
Somebody may comment, maybe they're coming, so I don't know what's going on with it. I figured they'll get them and they get here.
Yeah.
So, would they use all 300 north from one to take them?
No, they've assured me they're coming in from the north.
Okay. That, that was in the, the plan that they submitted, they, they use them-
Because I questioned-
They come through Henry and Wayne Counties, and the-
Yeah, I, I questioned them specifically because I-
Well, they're calling, well, they're not using our airport like they did last time.
No, they're not. They're staging, they're staging them up north, I think, someplace.
That was the plan then. Jay, do you have, do you have any traffic counts on any of these suspect roads?
No. I can tell you, 300 up here is a busy road.
Yeah, it's- But it's not near as busy as it was when Vistion was on.
Yeah, but it still stays pretty busy, with a lot of-
Rush County was-
Try to do anything, you find out real quick. Yeah, yeah, Vistion-
Rush County used it, 300 north.
There's still a lot of people using it. Yeah, I went and checked it. I mean, it could stand it all the way up to the county line.
It, it's gonna have to be chip sealed or-
Yeah, that's six, that's six point two miles.
And I'm not opposed, I, I think we need to continue chip seal program out Fairview and towards the township, and I think we ought to be really on top of-
Yeah.
I mean, maybe overdo it some, but, but I have a hard time spending money on asphalt and then have it tore up.
I don't like it.
When, when we could've put that asphalt somewhere else-
And you don't chip seal it, make it break down?
Yeah, and just use chip seal.
I mean, if you've got bad spots, you go over there and spray a little hot mix on it, and then chip seal.
But if we, if we keep up our chip seal, we won't have any bad spots.
Yeah, but you've got, up here on 700, you've got some. And I checked it, I checked it yesterday.
It really needs chip, I mean, there's a lot of-
It needs something.
There's a lot of work up north that needs, a lot of roads up north that need a lot of chip seal.
But I did some running around down here, over around Sprinkleville. You can do that run from the church all the way out to the county line, and it's, I got it down there, 4.6 miles. Where are we talking about?
Going north.
One toward Brown.
Going east?
First, first, yeah.
Sprinkleville Run.
To Brown, so.
Yeah.
From, from, from by the church, well, you, they actually, we start right there in the curb, the last second curb. And that's where they stopped when they paved out there, the city did. So, why they went that far, I don't know.
You mean just to the, on the east side of town?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you take it all the way out. I run it.
Oh, the church, I'm about to cross the line.
Yeah, probably.
No, not to go to Sprinkleville.
Okay, I-
I, I just started to, I was on that one.
That's why I thought you'd go more.
The bike or truck.
Yeah, yeah.
I just made a random run through all of these, I looked, I looked on that map, I got, showed, did I show you that one?
No.
I went back and checked the annual reports, and marked when these roads were, anything done here. You can look across that, you can see the dates when they were done.
Yeah.
Different colors, year. Then I went out, 'cause there's a lot of them, I went back to 2012, and as you see, some of them aren't marked at all. And that's the ones I wanted to go check and see, to see what they look like. And most of them are pretty good shape, but there's some that need attention.
I mean, they're, a lot of them are probably not touched because they didn't, they don't have the traffic that warrants-
Yeah.
-the need for it, yet.
Yeah, a lot of them.
But now, Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, the community crossing grant is set up by projects.
Correct.
You're approved, you're approved by projects.
Yes.
Did they want you to stay in one area?
No, and, and they've kinda changed the application when I went to class a few weeks ago. They said you could do up to 50 sections in one application now, so-
Fifty sections, meaning?
Fifty sections roadway in one application, you can go up to. They're gonna put all of your application, like, that will have subcontracts under one big contract, so that we don't get in the situation like we did this year, where one project came in under budget, another one came over, and we couldn't move money from back and forth. It's all gonna be, like, under one umbrella project, so that money can be moved from project to project. Correct.
But, we can't have three projects that we contract out, and three projects that we do in-house with our label.
No, you cannot mix that money.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
We can do all the projects in-house.
Right.
Let me know.
But the most, the most you can ask for, if you do them all in-house, is $250,000.
Okay, they did put a-
That's a maximum, they did put a maximum on that, yes.
So, we can get profit from three projects, we don't?
No, because they, they wasn't part of the community crossings.
Like, they use our money.
And if we go, um-
But what I was, what I was after was, if, if we can get a million dollar grant with our match money, with a combination of the million dollars, and we can do 13 miles by comparing it all out, we might be able to do 30 miles if we do it in-house.
It could let you do it in-house, okay.
But, but the problem is, they lower the dollar amount.
Right, they lower the dollar amount to 250.
They want you paying somebody else to do it.
Yeah.
That's, that's the whole thing.
That's the, that's the lobby. That's the lobby.
It, yes.
They got, got us there.
And, and our max that we can ask for will be approximately 1.3 million. That includes our match.
Yeah.
The entire project, giving a total of about 1.3 million.
Yeah. For the total project, 1.3.
So, what, what was the cost this year?
Just above over 300,000.
Our match, yeah.
Our match.
I was talking about the total cost.
Was it 880, or something?
Yeah, but that didn't include our match. Yeah, about 1.2 million is what-
About 100 miles this year, next year, coming up.
But, what we'll do is, what we can do is give Diana a list of roads. She can give it to Butler Fairman, they'll go out and cost estimate them, and then they're gonna come back and they're gonna tell Diana, well, that doesn't fit the application.
Yeah.
Now you need to pull out-
Yeah.
Right.
Give us close to a million bucks, what roads we-
We need, you need to pull out $200,000 worth of project.
But next year, on, on the money, I know we got so many miles, but didn't we get less wedge leveling, less patching than we normally would for this money, so are we gonna do that next year? I mean, I know they didn't say it was an inferior product, but-
Their wage didn't just-
They just did what they had to do, but it wasn't as good as it would've been what they did on Pennville and all those up there. It wasn't, you know, because-
I don't know.
Cost was so high.
Turned out pretty good.
I think it did too.
What I drove.
That's good enough, it's just what the middle-
Because they waged 200, and done it too. And it turned out pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
I've got them out right now, chip sealing-
Because I know they cut a lot out of each project.
Spots on that, right, maybe hold up, so we can get out there in Berman, do something with it. The ones that are all broke up, there's 20 spots on that road.
Which one, Everton?
Yeah.
Another suggestion is-
It's all up here on the east end, too.
We could always do core sampling. We could always do core sampling.
Yeah, for inspection.
Well, prior to our application, to let us know, are we gonna need extra base on this road? Will we have, you know, because we don't do much milling, because, you know, we don't have much base on our roads.
This one, that Everton road, when the nut doesn't have grounds, it's so deep.
That's right.
Because that's what happened to be milled.
And same way, I was upset over Waterloo Road going up through there, because we went in there 15 years ago and put that base in, and then we milled it all off, and hauled it off. Oh, I was upset over that. But, I just want us to stick with primary roads, I, I wanna get, if, if people travel eight miles to town to work-
I guess we wanna get most bang for the buck.
Yeah. You know, I wanna drive two miles on, on a, a standard road and six miles on a good road.
Yep.
Great road, you know, that's, that's what I'm after, and that's what we tried to do back when we had the PUD program.
And just as a reminder too, our bids are gonna come in better if we have them clumped together than a piece of road here, you know, because we're not mobilizing them and demobilizing it every-
I, I would, I would love for us to come to some agreement to stay in some, the same region, and I, I don't care where that's at, I'm, I'm open.
Just pick up the most roads in the, in the area, which one's got the most, and pick them out first.
You know, that's why I mentioned, if we're gonna be in 650 and Columbia Road, well, maybe we oughta consider going to Orange.
You could, yeah. Or Strawberry Hill.
Yeah, that's why I suggested that, so we, we could keep them together.
Yeah.
Or keep them in one location.
There's changed a lot of ways here on Clinton, hauling around shit.
You know, we might, we might split, do two regions.
Then you could actually do 300 here too. What's that?
300 north.
All right, all 650, 650 here, 650 is right here. If you come down here to 300, take it all the way to county line.
That's 400.
Three hundred.
300.
That's only two miles.
But how much, I, I don't know that we consider, our Pazer considers that as a primary road.
Do they count how many houses are on it?
I don't, I don't know how they consider that.
The traffic count is downloaded from the state website.
How do they keep their traffic count?
When they put the counters out.
That'd be a quick one, right in that area you did, you could do that one, that one, and that one.
You know, your colored map up there shows, remember, green is good and red is bad.
Green is good.
Red is bad.
All right, go, go from one bit south. Scroll up on that.
Okay, so you've got-
Forty fours, right there, something.
You've got 300 and 300 showing red. Why are they showing red?
There's twos, there're, there're twos.
Well, then that's the ones you wanna hit there.
Well, I've got the same map.
Do we, did they do a list of the primary ways on the Pazer? Do Butler, do they have a list of all the roads that are?
On that, on that Excel spreadsheet that we sent on, on table one, it has all of that stuff.
That's Strawberry Hill there.
That's Strawberry Hill.
Can you, Diane, can you tell us if these roads through here are considered primary?
This one right here?
Does the Pazer-
This one right here, Gary, the one I got highlighted?
Yes.
Doesn't the Pazer say primary or secondary?
It tells, um, um, not really primary. And actually, this year, they're taking that out of the application.
Primary or secondary?
The road count, the traffic counts on the road. Let me, I can get this number for you, let me go through to another.
Because I don't want to jeopardize our grant application by doing a bunch of secondary roads.
Yeah, because you'd think that would be a primary road going through another small town and going to county line.
So, you-
But you know what kind of grant would get on the county line?
Well, there's county line, and-
Rush County.
Yeah, the Orange Pike moving on.
Then the Orange Pike would-
It'd go straight on up that way, yeah.
Rush would branch. I, I, you know, I wouldn't have any idea what the traffic count, like, is on the Rush County side there, but I know, except there in Orange, there's a lot of traffic.
I could park somebody out there tomorrow, let them count the cars. If you can keep them waiting.
Well, that might be a problem.
Pardon who I sent out there? Do you have a box full of chocolate, so you'd be all wound up in that stairway?
For some reason, Diane, I thought it, that there was a chart that-
There is, it's table one.
That had designated primary and secondary, or, no, what was, there's a different term that they use.
Um, arterial.
Arterial or-
Main arterial, yeah.
I thought they didn't do it maybe.
I can tell you what Howard used to call them, first class and second class roads.
Then there were gravel.
Yeah, that was, I didn't even have a big mind to say about them.
No, he did. I finally told him one day, the commissioner meeting, I said, Howard, if you're not gonna put gravel on them and you're not gonna grade them, let's just pay them that.
Yeah, seal them or chip seal them or something.
Let's hard surface them, because if you're, if that's the only way you're gonna take care of them, then that's, let's do it that way. But them people do, they, they, they deserve the very best gravel road we can give them.
Yeah, and they decide to live on it.
This is the table one. For the-
They don't, they don't give it anymore, do they?
There's a, like, if somebody has asthma that lives on that road, does that have any pull on what they do to the road or not? It doesn't matter.
I mean, that, what happens to the road ha, is up to the commissioners and the highway department.
It has pull, and enough they get calcium on it, summertime.
Yeah, it does. And I think it should-
Yeah, they think it should be dusted.
I think that they, that should be-
We had only one guy called for calcium, we didn't get a chance to get it done, because our truck wasn't working. It was a fire truck.
But I, if you, if you wanna stay down in that way, Jay, what about Coltrane Hill Road, and then come, work your way down to Garrison?
Yeah, you can go either way.
And then that would start, start this process.
Yep.
Down the road. I don't, I don't know how bad this is getting. Because we pugged this from-
Allentown?
From, from Alpine Road-
Not gonna be that bad, I think.
To Allentown to Johnson School.
This is the dead, and I think there's a stretch right down through here that needs some tension. Right in here, it's got some holes in it. I think up, up over this hill, you might have some up here at the top, by the old blessed pony farm, you know where that's at, don't you do?
Yeah.
But yeah, but it was in pretty good shape out there, I think.
Because I know we pugged all that.
And that's, that's green, what is that?
They done in 17.
Chip seal.
Chip seal out there, so, I mean, they chip sealed from here out, so that shows the outline.
What's black then?
Black's piggy. I just started putting that in black too, so we can see where they paid.
So, this has been overly-
Chip seal, yeah, 17.
Or, oh, okay.
Chip seal, yeah. So, that'd make it two years old, that would make it down to an eight with it, Diane?
Yeah, here is a nine.
Yes.
Eighteen, nineteen, so.
Oh, so they're up Fairview. So, so what's, what's 400, and then?
400's two.
South, is it two?
Yeah, 300 south's a two.
And then on into Orange.
Yeah.
Is that still two as well?
Well, they got a nine from-
Well, it's because they chip sealed the streets in Orange.
Yeah.
You can see that.
Yeah, from whatever that is.
Yeah.
West, just the last half mile over there.
That's a-
So then we could get at least up to the Orange Town limit, that I've, I hate.
Yeah, well, you could take it right through the main street, they didn't do it.
Yeah.
They did the outside streets, you could see it.
But that, to me, I, I mean, my, my personal preference, I don't care.
They're calling it on the map, they call it secondary road, that little short direction.
I don't-
There's scenes here, scene road.
Yeah.
I've never been big on districts, but we gotta do so much in each district.
You got a lot of places needed.
And, I just seem, we keep equipment.
Together.
Together.
Yeah.
And we'll do it here, you know, you might work here this year, and you might work here next year, and-
But, and with our favorite way it is, if we gonna do anything, we gotta put it in an area where we can stay close. Otherwise, we're driving all the way, thousands, they come hauling.
We're gonna have to make that change.
We're gonna have to make that change.
Yeah. We're gonna have to get a bigger truck.
Well, we need a little boy.
Need a little boy with a tractor, because the truck we got our spray tank on, used to be an old tractor. But didn't have no hydraulics with it, so you couldn't run a tilt trailer, but you could work the brakes on a trailer, but you couldn't raise it up and down, see, that's all.
We need to consider one of those dump trucks.
Well, if you find a tractor, you can find a good tractor, if you're gonna pull a little boy with it.
Yeah.
I said there's a lot of stuff you can use.
But we, we, we put a pretty good dent in it this year.
Well, this lid, it didn't need to do a long time ago.
Yeah, you know, most of all that equipment I replaced when I was the mayor.
I don't-
Before, now it's all come back around.
It does.
We bought, we bought that payload, we bought the grade on, we bought-
So, we got the new grade on now.
And now they replaced it again, and-
Yeah.
Paper.
The trailer, the tilt trailer, we bought it, we had it, one you had to push, push to bottom down to raise it up.
Yeah. We bought that tilt trailer for that other paper, the old paper.
Yeah.
And then we traded papers.
For what he paid for that tilt trailer?
He could've bought it with a little. I bet.
But he didn't, he didn't, he don't like that, you haul without a little boy.
Howard didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, what did he have each little boy? What did he have each little boy?
I don't know.
He just, and you ever would say, he, but he just fought it tooth and nail.
Because we always had, if we had to send a grader to Indianapolis, somebody had to come haul it and charge you, take it up there. If you had your own little boy, you're taking it up for yourself. Save yourself $1,500 every time they do.
Or what would be even nicer, if, if, um, somebody had, if we owned the local one, and we just hired somebody local-
Hold it, pull it.
Yeah. Then we wouldn't have to be buying license plates for another truck to sit around.
Insurance.
Insurance and all that.
Good looking license plates.
We got another title this week in the mail.
We only got one plate for the old three grade trucks.
Still?
Yeah.
I thought Jane said we finally got one.
We got titles back, we only got one.
Oh, great.
Good thing they leave us alone, is all I got to say.
So, where do we wanna go?
Where the Bushes previous.
Do we, do we wanna stay in the south? Do we wanna-
Because you really don't wanna do anything in Posey or none of those, nor south roads that talk to the sewers, make them the ones.
I, I think, I, I wanna chip seal them.
Yeah, chip seal, because there's, I mean, there's, I mean, all of five fifty west is a two.
Five fifty west being...
For miles, Manloft Park Road for miles is a two.
Manloft Park, uh, five fifty, um, four hundred, it, it did get some attention last, last year or year four, Richard chip sealed some of it. Um, but they all need chip seal. We've got to get up there and chip seal them.
Yeah, they haven't been touched.
No.
Haven't been touched since two thousand twelve, I don't see nothing down there.
We waited, we waited five fifty from, from Bentonville South.
Yep.
We waited on that pug to haul apart before we chip sealed it.
Four fifty was done in seventeen, isn't sort of notorious for that.
You know, and we can't, we can't wait on them, they, they're gonna be chip sealed next year.
Yep.
I mean, we gotta spend a lot of chip seal work, time up there.
No, we get in one area, we just need to work it till we're done.
I've been very patient the last three years.
When's the last time you did, you stick up the road, the whole road, kind of something like that?
UG?
Yeah, uh, it's been just a few years, I don't...
Oh, few years.
We, well, we started it in...
When was the last year Howard was here? Well...
I don't have any idea, because he was here when I left.
Now, do you remember?
No, he wasn't here, he come back again.
Yeah, he wasn't, he come back. When was the last year Howard was here?
Tom, Tom was here.
Tom Futterman took his place at first.
Yeah, that would have been...
Tom was under me.
I think his last year was, uh...
Ten? I remember when Tom come down there.
Nine or ten.
Because Tom wasn't there very long.
Nine or ten.
I was...
I, I think it was ten.
Ninety-seven, I started in ninety-seven as commissioner, and we started paving in ninety-eight, Pug, I think. And then I was out in oh-three and Tom was...
Tom was in there at ten, I think. And then when he, when he got removed, I think it was my turn. I put it, well, I think I was eleven when I took it.
Because for some reason, Russ, he got that way.
Sounds, yeah, I think that was...
Because I was there till two thousand fourteen, when they did all that stuff for the perk, maybe.
Well, you were, you were in, you come in after I went out.
Yeah.
And Tom was still...
Tom went out while I was still in.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Two thousand seven, two thousand...
And did Howard come, didn't Howard come back?
Howard come back.
Okay. He must have taken all about it.
Because you guys brought Howard back.
He's out in eight, nine, or ten, somewhere in that group.
Then you brought Rick back. Then the council did away with it again and...
Yeah, I was the only councilman that really Rick.
Oh, yeah.
I was in charge at it when we got rid of Rick.
But anyway, that's...
Hey, I didn't watch the...
I don't think, you're a troublemaker.
I didn't have a problem firing the first time.
It seemed like, yeah, you take...
I, I, I slept quite well after.
Dale said, watch what you say.
But anyway. Um, where are we going?
Doing some roof.
If you want to keep it close, I could work in this area down here off six fifty. Get those ones that are twos and get them done.
As I look at these, look at these number twos, the ones that are coated red.
Yep.
Hopefully pick out the ones, the red ones that have highest traffic count.
And get, think about how many houses wrong.
And the number of houses also...
Because I know three hundred's got a slew of houses on it. But I think they're every...
Yeah, there's, there's several houses, quite a few houses on, on three hundred south.
They're every, every quarter mile there's a house.
Well, what do you mean, locate, take the plaque, look, pick off the people's farms in there or properties, and see how they're lined up, uh, and probably a house.
The only problem is, we, we gotta cut them away tonight with the list. Because we gotta get Butler Fairman working on cost estimates.
Diana, how many miles is, or is that even gonna play into the equation? How many miles, um...
We can arrive at...
Didn't we do about seven this year?
Yeah, you're seven or eight, at least they just see, because you got eight tens in Bentonville.
Because I think we did thirteen or fourteen last year.
And it just depends on, on the cost estimates that we get, you know, the contractors are really busy right now.
For where?
With all this community crossing money, so we're not getting the bids that we...
Three and a half miles.
Were in the beginning.
Yep.
Do you know the award amount is twenty bucks?
Twenty point two thousand dollars.
Well, I'm in hopes that that is.
Maximum, we're at one three.
Maximum is one three, that's the most...
Three on it.
With...
With our match.
We could ask for one million dollars and our match is like three hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Quite a mile there.
Independent and a bypass, probably right at eight miles when we got done this year.
Yep.
Pretty close to eight.
For, yeah, it'd be close to that.
Now, taking, taking into consideration, the bypass is wider.
Yep, so you're gonna be a little bothered.
So we should be able to get a little farther. I, I would think we need to come up with ten miles for Butler Fairman to estimate, cost estimate.
That way we get some control.
And then that way we can, we can, when they come back and it's one, with a cost estimate of one, number five...
And culverts are gonna figure into your cost estimates as well.
We know what we can back out, that we have to back out.
Do you want culverts to put in for the, the contract do it, or are you gonna try and do it for the...
We'll try to do it, we get, get an idea which roads we're gonna do. We'll get the weather and let's just do it, we try to do it before we get started. They should, they should, they need to be breaking ground now.
Well, Dale, do you want to stand in the south?
Hey, hey, if we can keep the jobs, I mean, for less, uh...
If we can do here and here, maybe, or...
I, I don't object to that, I do know that... I do know that Springerville Road has a lot of traffic, and it's not all like Reddy said.
Yeah, it's got some areas.
How many miles is that?
Springerville?
From the church you said out to county line?
All the way to here?
Like four point six.
That's from...
That's by the county line.
Uh, on the other hand, you, you was talking about four hundred south, I know what kind of condition it is. How much that, two, two something on four hundred south in there? Four hundred south, uh, we got a few...
We can figure it out. One, two, probably two and a half, looks like that would go into the end of town.
So how many miles we got? Three, four, six, and two and a half, about seven.
Well, if you go straight through the middle of town, though, it's gonna be three.
Three, so...
A little over seven, probably.
Between the two?
Well, once you got the two miles on six fifty.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, I forgot about six fifty.
So that's, um...
At least nine.
That's nine.
Nine.
Um, so... Can we look at, um, while they're up there in Springersville?
I know what you're thinking about. You're thinking about that little burg in Springerville, around that corner?
Well...
That's Lyonsville.
Lyonsville.
That we could do ourselves.
Yeah.
What I'm, what I'm thinking is there a couple of miles in, in this stretch?
In this, the worst part of it is right up here.
Well, that's what I'm...
That's not where the CAPO is too, is it?
Down here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is in good shape down here.
But I'm wondering this...
South of the town.
This stretch on four fifty.
Okay, south of Longmont, from the railroad track to Lyonsville.
South.
To the highway.
South highway.
Yeah, that's the worst part of that road, because I checked it the other day out here, just seeing what it looked like.
And then that way you're covering, the, the, the crew stays out here and here.
Yeah.
Four fifty east has a lot of traffic.
Yeah, and this, this has just been chip sealed in sixteen.
Yeah, so what's, what is this color? Is this red?
Oh, um, the little one, yellow, actually it's a four.
It's not...
Well, part of it's a two, well, it's kind of hard to tell. It had three, they raised it to a four for some reason. You're just talking from forty-four down up to Lyonsville Road.
Uh-huh.
Well, it's actually yellow all the way to Springerville Road. How far is that? This I don't think is really very good scale. At least a mileage.
But I, I would say if you add it back...
Yeah, that's crazy. Right there, it didn't show yellow, then it's red, when you get next to highway.
What?
Oh, yeah, down here?
Yeah, that's red there. That's your highway, the dots, your highway.
That would be there.
But that is the worst section, right in there.
Mm-hmm.
Do this, put this down for a cost estimate. Then do this, of course, and then come out here.
And that would, that'd be pretty close to the same number of miles that we did this year.
Yeah, it'd be off the books.
So we're gonna try to do Springersville from the church, all the county line.
Well, actually, it's right here in this corner where it's at, that's where they stopped their hot picks at.
Yeah.
Where the city stops.
Yeah, where the city stopped. And then they want to do this section here.
From Springerville Road down to Base Road?
Yeah, off four fifty.
No.
Four fifty east.
Clear to... That at Mars, though, you know.
Clear to forty-four, not stop at Base Road.
All the way to dots, yeah, the dots are forty-four.
Here, here.
Is that there at the nursing hut?
No, no, that's, that's clear out there toward county line.
Springer's, or out here. Yeah, Springer's.
Right here.
No, not, not yet, not till we figure out what to do with this.
Builders pumped up like everybody else, no discrepancy on some of that hill. We need to build that hill up.
But not.
So the same thing on, uh...
We need to get some rider away.
Yeah.
See, right here, that shouldn't be red, but we paid, that's where we stopped in Columbia. We paid from there to there.
Oh, yeah, that should be, that should be a ten.
That should be a ten.
That's paid, this is paid?
Yeah, it is.
That's where we stopped right there.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, that needs fixed.
Yeah. So what we're talking about so far is basically pumping jobs into...
Two different locations.
Yeah.
Two, two neighborhoods, they...
Is that okay?
Yeah.
With you?
And it, that would minimize the...
Travel time.
Amount of time. Still talking four hundred south?
Yeah, and six fifty out there.
All the way out to here?
All the way up to county line, right through all down.
County line.
Yeah, that'll...
So four hundred south of county line?
Yep, off Columbia Route.
You can look at this to me tomorrow, right up.
Yeah, then they're talking about six fifty to the highway, you got that?
Springersville.
Springersville and on four fifty, from Springersville to forty-four.
So let me ask you this, how, how important, how, how much traffic is from Springersville on out to the county line? Versus?
Going out.
Coming up four fifty?
Well... That's a very good question. Because I know there's a lot of people goes that way, I've run into them a lot.
I mean...
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't deny that there's probably not a lot of traffic from here getting to Springersville, but I'm wondering how many is going this way? Versus to Brownsville?
Yeah. Until you set a counter out there, you ain't gonna know, if that's what they're gonna check.
And, and what I'm wondering, I don't know what this is, a mile or...
That is a mile. It's square is a mile.
Yeah, it's, yeah. I'm wondering if we'd be bounty ahead, more money if we put that mile in this stretch.
Then you catch up to this road here.
Yeah, then you can do this right here and that right there and just stop right on, do that out there.
I mean, you may...
You should stop right in Springerville and not go to the...
Have them do the intersection. They can do the intersection there and then just take it this way or then go that way.
But we may get in trouble if this is too high of a rating up here then.
I don't think it is. I'm looking for Springer going out, I've lost it.
You took your finger off it, didn't you?
Yeah, I did, didn't I? Okay, right here, okay, yes, yeah, was that orange?
Orange.
Orange.
Kind of...
Which road is that about county?
Four fifty.
Oh, four fifty.
Yeah, four fifty, out to two, what is that, two hundred, right here?
Yeah, two hundred, two hundred north.
Two hundred north, did it show you road number? Where's two hundred north? One fifty to two hundred right here.
Two hundred north, yeah.
That's where they're going, right there to there.
Yeah, and...
I mean, not mildly concerned is...
Yeah, they show this is orange, red, that's showing, he just did that in sixteen.
Yeah.
Well, it may...
They didn't get it on the paper, yeah.
Like down here, if we're talking about Everton, going...
It looked good down there, I checked.
Where we're going to...
But it's got certain cracking on it, that's how...
Yeah, I know, that's what I was looking for.
Is that like, we're, we're gonna go a mile north and then a mile...
We give that access.
Yeah.
We're, we're, have greater access to recreation, but I, I don't know where we're going if we go this way, all the traffic, other than...
You don't know, you don't know how much traffic's on that right there.
We, you don't have a traffic count on it?
I don't have a traffic count on it. I'm not even sure if I know how to work that traffic counter down there.
If, if...
Been there so long, and I don't know where the, the CD is for it, all they say.
Richard doesn't know either, so, didn't know either, so. Might as well throw all that stuff away.
Yeah.
They got a camera up there with the stickle.
It goes.
But, but if you, I mean, if these people were traveling from Springersville out here to go to Liberty, okay.
Yeah, but if they're turning, you got two choices here, you can turn, you can come out here. Right here, on this road, I went out there in the middle of the night for a downed tree, and let me tell you, that is a busy road.
Walk road.
Walk road.
See, come from Brownsville.
I had to turn five or six people away from that tree, come, go down there.
That's coming out of Brownsville.
Yeah, walk road.
We, uh, back in work, something happened after one night, we had a pump that tore off.
There was a guy pulling a house trailer down from him, don't surprise him.
I figured, figured we'd get caught. Springerville Road east and, and Walk Road both had right straight for Brownsville.
Yeah. They knew the wire idea there.
But I, I, I don't care, we can go to county line, but I, I just, I, I just thought most of the traffic's probably going north or south.
There's a lot of traffic on that Springerville Road, semis and all. I can look to see if that stuff's still down there, but we're guaranteeing it is.
I know, I do know that four fifty is, is...
This used to be a busy road.
Yeah, it still is, it's, it's a busy road.
And, and... It, it's almost traffic to go clear to Everton.
Close, you shoot it up to forty, will it catch you?
Yeah.
Yeah, you boost right on up, takes you right into Centerville, yeah.
You turn right at the county line and then turn back left and...
It's all good road.
It's all good road. So I wonder, you know, I wonder if we won't get more bang for our buck to go for forty-four.
Close that in there.
Clear up to here.
Yep. Yep.
Then you can get there all the way up to that account that way.
I mean, it'd be nice if we just did all of that, but you, I don't think we can one, one swipe.
No. That's.
We, if it came in this year, I don't expect them to be any better than that.
I don't either.
Too much work if you, if you go directly?
Yeah. And.
Just the way they claimed it.
Yeah.
Just the way they claimed it. So. You still want to go to County Line or you want to go north to Springersville?
I would go north, I'm south. Up, up.
Okay, let's do that then.
You get a lot of semis coming up and down that road.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to beat for that.
Hog operation, yeah.
Got the capo sitting up there with that.
So how far north are you gonna go?
Just up to two hundred.
Just right here.
Well.
First road to the right.
Do you want to, it's not gonna cost us anything more for them to.
To evaluate it?
To evaluate it, is it, Diana?
Um.
What's the orange supposed to be, a three?
Orange is a two.
Maybe a little.
I mean, it's not gonna make that much difference.
It wouldn't make that much difference.
Orange is a four. See?
Yellow, that's yellow.
That's yellow, what's that?
Do you want to let Butler Fairman give us the cost estimate?
This is an orange here. Three, this is an orange here.
And then we can pull off of what we can't.
We, we gotta have the cost estimate.
I mean, this way off here.
Why not?
All the way down up to Springerville.
And I run this one down. I run that down that way, see what they look like.
Let's, let's do that, Bill. Let's, let's have Butler Fairman do the cost estimate from City Limits to Springersville.
Yep, and from forty-four down.
From forty-four to the County Line.
North?
Yes.
Okay.
You're gonna make, you're gonna make Chuck, Unbarrel will be around, you know that, he'll come down there and just brag on that and do that.
Now, we can go with County Line, but that's a nine. Did you guys check to seal that?
They did it one time.
That's what we're saying, that's a nine.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. So they called that a nine.
And this is in sixteen.
All right, then we'll have to stop at four hundred north.
Okay.
What do they, what do they call that? At four hundred?
Four hundred, what's the nine at County Line?
No, from four hundred.
No, no.
Four there, three down here.
Yep. Four there.
Four's threes and twos.
And you got twos, and then you come back up to a nine up here, it says. Well, this is the highway.
Yeah, highway stop.
This is Alphard.
Yeah.
So we're done?
We're done.
So basically we're.
We had our whole estimate. Springerville Road also. There. And the highway.
That's orange, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's still, we're still gonna do four hundred south. Yeah.
It's at six fifty, that's about all we can do, six fifty west.
At least we'll have cost estimates and then we can determine if it comes in way higher, which we expect it will man higher than our grant, then we can. Start to get, okay, what we do like that.
Yeah. Well, they, they're giving us more flexibility this time than we had before.
And, and I, I, I would be of the opinion.
Chip seal this year, we didn't have on our, our list.
Subtracting from north to south.
They got transferred and then the new list, they got four fifty north up there on County Road one and done grazing that up.
That would be your answer.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I found it when I was looking at maps, but Daryl.
You guys chip seal.
Use that for the next year.
One list.
You know, like we did.
It would hurt to have it, man.
You got a list.
Two in a list.
Yeah.
We'll get the estimates, let's see, do you see it? See what's in it.
Is there anything else that we need to discuss then, in reference to this, Diana?
I don't think so.
Do you have enough information to get with that?
I have enough information.
You can call Gary.
Get in trouble, right?
Don't interrupt me to answer.
But you can call.
Now, if you call it three, that's fine, I'll answer, because I'll be up at three.
But we're putting this as the number one priority, right? This area's gonna be number one and this area is number two.
I, I would say that.
Finish out our.
Yeah, finish that.
That area. Priority one, A, and Springersville Road would be priority one, B, and, and then four fifty. Whatever we can get done on four fifty would be my, my filling.
Because I think we can do two applications instead, like this year I did four, you know, the project was four.
You're thinking you can get by with two.
And the reason I did that was in, when they start deleting projects, you know, I would rather them delete one road. You know, like the first year they deleted Penfield Road off.
Better.
Rather than, um.
The whole project.
So. We are not the ones that start to vet the roads off? If it doesn't meet the.
They do.
Financial budget? I mean, we'll send an application with one point three million worth of estimated cost of repair.
Close to thereabouts, yes.
Or, or as close as we can get.
Right.
Then they could come back and even cut more out of that.
Yes.
Right?
Correct.
And they have the right to cut specific, or they're gonna ask us, find three hundred thousand to cut out, or find a half million of that?
I don't know the answer to that, yeah.
Okay. That's yet to be determined.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know how that's going to be determined at that time.
I'll tell you what, gentlemen, we have to continue working hard to get this green, because for three hundred thousand dollar investment.
Can't afford to throw that money away.
We can't afford to throw it away and there's been some adjoining counties that have, for some odd reason. Chose not to take advantage of this or have lost out because they haven't crossed their D's.
They didn't have Diana.
Well, and I contribute that too.
That's a proof.
That's been my headache, been my worry.
She's our ace in the hole.
Thank you.
So, is there anything else that we need to do? I'll entertain a motion, don't you?
So moved.
Say. Motion main seconded, uh, motion by Dale, seconded by Mark. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.